Welcome to my living room in Los Angeles. My name is Leora. I'm the School Mental Health Lead for the Pacific Southwest MHTTC, the Mental Health Technology Transfer Center. Good to see you, Matt. There's like so many familiar faces online today. So I just want to name that we're so glad to have you. That today is a short study session and it is the second part of the study sessions that we're offering on the virtual learning guide that we produced, I don't know, Joanne, about two weeks ago, I think. Feels, what are weeks anymore? I don't even know, but around two weeks ago. And, and this session is one that I'm particularly very excited about because this session is focusing on how do we support content creation? How do we support trauma-informed virtual learning? And how do we also prepare and support all of the learners to join us? So I want to be really clear that this session, and actually, Joanne, I'm going to move back one slide. That this session is focusing on the three, the section three, four, and five in your virtual learning guide. And you have given us many questions in the chat box, some of which are much bigger questions about providing school mental telehealth and about providing mental health services in schools. And those are absolutely fundamental questions. And the purpose of today's session is to support all of you who are going to be or already are facilitating either didactic learning, so webinars and presentations, or supporting groups or supporting meetings online. So this is really to put on your facilitator hat and to kind of take a ride with us using that hat down the train. So, Joanne, I'm just going to pause. Kristy is saying that the audio has a lot of static. Are you hearing that on your end? No, okay. So Kristy, maybe you can message Joanne one-on-one and then we can continue to move forward. Some of you might be experiencing static in your own audio. Thank you for letting me know. Okay, cool. So let's move forward. I want to just welcome you that this deck, this slide is in the deck that you got before. This is actually something that Joanne put together and we're so grateful for it, which is a guide to kind of navigating Zoom. You'll see that on the bottom left-hand side, you'll be able to mute and start or stop your video. So I want to say two things about that. One is that everyone will be muted for this session until the very end and then you can unmute and ask me questions. I am actually also hearing a little audio, Joanne, so maybe we can find the one person who's not. Mitzi, I'm going to mute you, but not out of any other desire other than supporting everyone else's audio. And if you have questions, please put them in the chat box and make sure that it's either going to everyone or if they're talk-related questions, they're going to Joanne. So you can kind of decipher that way. On Friday, we talked a lot about other Zoom features that you can click on the arrow next to your video and you can touch up your appearance, you can change your background. We're not going to go so much into that today, but I wanted to name that. The piece that I would really like to play with just for the start is I'd like us to play with the rename function. So this is something you can do if you're on video or if you're off video. And if you hover your mouse over your box, so the little box that I see myself in way too often nowadays, if you hover your mouse over your box and there's a dot, 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 if you click on it, it'll have a dropdown and it says rename. And so I'm going to invite you to click on it and rename, keeping your name first, and then in parentheses, you can put how you're feeling in this moment, just one word. Where is your energy at right now? How are you feeling? And I'm going to model that right now. Oh gosh, how do you spell caffeinated? Okay, who knows? You're going to correct me in the chat box most often, most likely. So now you should see that if you see my name in parentheses, it has my name and then it also has how I'm feeling. So let's see. So are you Bridgette or Briggette? I don't know how to pronounce your name. You won't be able to tell me, but you can just give a thumbs up. We've got some melanous, melanous going on. Bridgette, okay, great, thank you. Some of us are ready to learn. Some of us have allergies. I feel you. Some of us are feeling tired. Some of us are numbered out. Patty, that is very, what an interesting way of describing how you're feeling, but I am with you. You don't even need to say anything else. We've got Jamie excited. Let's look. So Cloudy is also feeling good. There's lots of goods and busy. Let's get Cassandra a snack. Okay, so great. So the rename function, I just want to say, is a really, if you're using Zoom, it's a really wonderful way of doing a check-in. And it's also a way of us, you can use, you can change it for your pronouns, you can change it for your role, but I'm going to land on it right now to just change on where we're at. Because it also is a facilitator gives me like a whole spectrum of where y'all are at. Some of you are super high energy, some of you are low energy, and that makes total sense, not only for always, it being Tuesday at 12:30, but for the now of the moment that we're navigating. So thank you. Okay, let's move forward. So I'm actually going to just move through these pretty quickly because I want to get to the stuff. And the stuff is the following, that we are a project of SAMSA, the Pacific Southwest MHTTC is a project of SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. And this presentation is funded by them, but doesn't fully reflect them, but I'm sure that they would very much support this learning. So thumbs up if you feel disclaimed. Okay, awesome, moving forward. Welcome Amelia in the chat box. And this is for the very tiny fonted visual that there are many ways for you to access support in the prevention space, in the addiction space, in the mental health space. We, the Mental Health TTC's, are the orange or burnt sienna or however else you want to call, find that color. We particularly serve the Pacific Southwest region. So that's the bottom left-hand region where you see the number nine. And we're tasked with serving the US territories of the Pacific Islands, Hawaii, California, Nevada, and Arizona. I saw a lot of folks from our region in the house, so really welcome, happy to have you. And we have a lot of other, of course, the rest of the country is also supported by other HTC's, PTTCs, and MHTCs. So those of you from West Virginia and Iowa and Puerto Rico, you have your own regional TTC, but you can access any of us just like you're doing right now. I also want to wave to our colleagues who are in the Addiction Technology Transfer Centers who are in this learning because it's such, it's so shared. So we are going to move through this and I'm actually just going to get to the stuff. Okay, so here's the deal. And Todd, I'm going to get to your question in two seconds. The deal is that when this whole time period, kind of around early March, when we saw that many folks were moving their in-person learning, so that could be facilitation, workshop, peer sessions, any of the, any of the type of in-person learning, that many of us were moving virtually. And there was kind of an assumption, and I'm actually not talking about classroom or higher education teaching right now. I'm talking about facilitated professional development, coaching, consulting, et cetera. There was a little bit of an assumption that what happened in person was going to be easily moved online and that we as facilitators were going to be like, cool, got it, let's just roll. What we know is that, two things. One is that in-person facilitation is an art. And virtual facilitation is an art. And so what we wanted to do as an MHTTC is we wanted to create a guide to support all of you who are going to be potentially leading learning and navigating learning with some tools to ensure that you feel efficacious, your learners feel efficacious, and that the technology doesn't get in the way of the transformation. That was our goal. So a couple pieces. One is that the guide was sent in a link beforehand. It's on our website. It will be sent to you afterwards. You do not need the guide for this session, although it is very helpful to have. The other caveat that I want to name, particularly because we're focusing on sections three, four, and five today, is that many of you will have things to add to what I am describing. And so I am here, Leora, again, Leora. I am here simply to kind of provide what our learnings are and our suggestions are. And I really hope that throughout the whole time in the chat box, you can offer, here's what we do. This is our thought process so that we can create a learning community in this space. Okay, cool. So, all that to say, as you, some of you were with us on Friday and we covered sections one and sections two. I don't know about you. It felt like a whirlwind. I was like, Joanne and I afterwards were like, whoo, that was really fast and a lot. Today, we're focusing on three, four, and five, which I have to say, and our colleagues at South Southwest know this. This is like my jam jam, talking about how to create content, how to facilitate through a trauma-informed lens and also creating safe and warm welcoming environment for the learner. We want to also say the three main points that we said on Friday, but many of you were not with us on Friday, which is that, three things. Both the delivery and the design matter equally. So anytime you're facilitating, you're going to think not only about how are you constructing the pedagogy and how are you delivering the pedagogy? So both the platform and the pedagogy and the learning, those two Ps. Virtual and in-person matter, but equitably, meaning they're not actually equal. They need to be adjusted to meet the needs of both the content and the audience and the facilitator, that whole triangle, right? So particularly for many of us who are involved with content, where there's lots of charge, we're either talking about mental health, we're talking about behavioral health, we're talking about socio-emotional learning, we're talking about racial justice, we're talking about things that can be quite sticky because we don't live in a culture that welcomes uncomfortable conversations. So many of us are navigating that. All to say that virtual learning has its benefits and it also has its challenges when navigating sticky conversations, right? I can see you, but I can't feel you. And so I want us to be really thoughtful as facilitators about our own non-negotiables and boundaries of what content do we agree to move online and what content actually should be held for in-person or even a phone call or another way to create an actual safe space. Okay? So the piece that I want to say for this session is to not assume that virtual learning is safe, just like we wouldn't assume that in-person learning is safe, right? So you always assume that it isn't and then wire so that it can become. And then the third point, like I said earlier, is that we are learners too, Joanne and myself both and our whole team. And so we really rely on you to give us some teaching and some feedback and some, some thoughts for yourself around your own practice. Okay, you're going to hear me take a couple breaths throughout this time period. It's for a couple reasons. One is that I'm really excited. Two is that I'm nervous that I'm not going to get to all the things that I want to get to. And three is that I need to breathe. So, you know, there's that. Okay. So I want to start with section three, which is our content guidance for content creators. So this is actually going to be really quick, which is that we believe, and Joanne is really, has been such a formidable leader in this as our digital learning manager, that it is not enough just to say, Maureen, Doty, Todd, create a PowerPoint on this and then deliver it. You actually have to create really clear guidance and that can even just be a meeting, really clear guidance around what language and content meets the needs and the principles and the values of your project or your program. So we often contract with many different people. You've been on our webinars or we have guest presenters. We review everything. We have content guidance for language, which means that, for example, for us as a, as a TA center, we, we really believe in, in first person and person-first language. You will not, I hope that you will not hear from any of our presentations, for example, an undocumented student rather than a student who is undocumented. Or you won't hurt here, for example, the word, most likely the word disorder because we really believe in the value of distress versus disorder. Or you might hear language that helps the audience actually understand the two. You won't hear the words mom and dad or parents because we don't assume and nor do we believe that every family comes with a mom and dad or parents, right? So we might say caregivers and family and family care systems. So our beliefs are reflected in our, in our content guidance. And that also goes to how we talk about groups of people. It also talks about how, if I'm a presenter and I'm presenting on, on content that doesn't reflect the skin that I live in, that I'm really clear about my own limitations. So I might be presenting about the mental health experiences of Black and Latinx youth, but I need to be clear to the audience that I don't identify as Black nor Latinx, right? And so some of the pieces for the content guidance for presenters and facilitators is to help meet and ensure that anyone presenting is aligned in a bounded way. So the question for all of you as facilitators and as organizations are, how do you develop content guidance? And, and I think, Joanne, you know, per Joanne's leadership internally, you'll see in the guide that we offer our examples and we found that there's a couple pieces to remember. One is that you have to choose really carefully about what your negotiables or non-negotiables are. What is like absolutely not, okay? And what is, if something, if someone says something, are you going to be like, oh man, that didn't really jive with us, but like, we're going to let it roll? And the other piece is to remember that, that actually, that guidance really helps people. Sometimes we're afraid to offer guidance or say, these are our guidelines because we don't want to be too pushy, but it actually really helps everyone be aligned in shared language. So I really recommend that you, we really recommend that you create content guidelines for presenters and facilitators. I know many of us on the line are grantees, which means we navigate what the grantor does and also what we might do as an organization or what the project is about. So you might actually have multiple iterations. I know, Joanne, we have multiple projects. We might have multiple iterations of content guidance to meet specific needs. If we have a project that's focused on youth of transition age, then our content guidance will reflect the language to ensure that we're meeting the needs of that audience. Okay. And then the last piece, and we're going to get into this in a little bit, which is really ensuring that the content itself is trauma-informed. And that comes along with talking about using person-first, first-person language, with using the terminology and the descriptors that the population would choose for themselves, of really being clear about language that might activate folks. So many years ago, I was teaching, I'm going to give an example. Many years ago, I was teaching a trauma-informed, trauma-informed facilitation workshop for folks who had been formerly incarcerated and had lived experience with gang and gun violence. And I kept saying, and on this bullet point, you'll see, and on that bullet point, you'll see. And I had someone raise their hand and say, miss, why are you using gun language when you're talking about healing and transformation? And I was like, oh, that's so fascinating. I've been using the word bullet when talking about becoming trauma-informed, when bullets actually activated experience that really connected for the folks in the room. So some of us are really needing, we can be really attuned into what language will allow everyone to be regulated as much as possible for the learning. Okay, so I'm going to pause here and just, if we can put in the chat box, one aha or one takeaway from this conversation about content guidance or content creators. So one aha or takeaway. You can put it in the chat box. So it could be something you liked, something you agreed with, something you have questions about, one aha. Yeah, so that language about bullets, right? So I try and use the word points now. Yes, language matters, in-person and virtually. Be sure of your non-negotiables. Don't assume virtual learning is safe. Yes. Match language to topic, yes. And even more to principles and values, right? Yes. General statements about family, mhm. Authenticity, trigger language, right? And even trigger is actually connected to guns. And so sometimes we use the word activation or stimulation. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so some of us work in DV or IPV. And so we might actually be thinking about how does our language actually become more nonviolent to reflect the needs of the folks that we serve? Cool. Okay, thank you. Okay, excellent. So I really encourage you to refer to our, our guide for more. And I'm more going to move ahead of time. I mean, we're going to move. I just said ahead of time because I saw that one of you just said ahead of time in the chat box. Julie, okay. All right. So actually, before I move into, nope, that's not true. I'm going to do this. Okay, so we're going to do a double dive into this piece. And I'm going to take some time here because if there's anything that we should come away with from this conversation, it's actually this content for me personally, which is the offerings of what to do and what not to do when it comes to creating trauma-informed in-person and virtual. And I want to be really clear, it took me a lot as a writer to not have like seven million pages of to-dos and not-to-dos. And then I was reminded by my colleague that actually I have to reflect what I'm preaching, which means keep it succinct and short and digestible. Okay. So on the screen, if you're with us on the screen and on the, on video, what you'll see is that these are really basic foundational practices for creating trauma-informed virtual learning. And I want to say two things about that. One is that we're talking about trauma-informed as an approach, which means even if the content is about, what's a random? Math and division, which by the way, it feels very traumatic to me, but math and division, you are still going to do these practices. And if the content is about, is actually about mental health and trauma, you're also still going to do this, if not even more. So trauma-informed is the always. It's not actually, we're, in this time, we're actually not even talking about this specific intervention. Okay, so I'm going to go through these, I'm going to go through these because I think these are really important to massage and comb through. The first is that it's really important to offer activation warnings, which means that if in the case, we're talking about something that might heighten someone or get someone out of their zone of regulation or zone of tolerance, it's really important to offer them activation warnings and to offer folks to be off video. I am not a believer that everyone needs to be on video for everything, for so many different reasons, mainly for equity reasons, but I'm not a big believer in that. Just in the same way as if we were in person, I would say probably the following. We're about to talk about trauma and stress and potentially even mental health distress. And so if you would like to be in the room, great. And if you'd like to step out, also great. We're going to be in this space for about 10 minutes and you can join us when you feel ready. That's it. We are trained in the world of education and mental health to sit in places that make us feel unsafe because that makes us feel like we're doing the work and we're professional. And I actually want to check that assumption and, and move through that assumption. So I think it's really important. Many of us are leading webinars on domestic violence, as we saw in the chat box. So we might be leading trainings on a specific topic, on grief, especially during COVID, lots of content around grief and loss and bereavement. And what I've been noticing is that there's a little bit of a dissociation between presenting about something versus being grounded in it and being, and holding people that we are both personal and professional. So I want to just welcome you that if you are offering a session on, for example, memorialization or commemoration, that even a sentence at the beginning is the permission for folks to engage in the content as their person or as their professional or also not at all. The second piece that I want to be really clear about is a desire, is a desire to invite us not to use case studies or stories that involve explicit harm. I'm seeing this a lot. I think a lot of us are seeing this where we think that in order to talk about mental health, suicide, trauma, et cetera, we have to give explicit stories. And I actually don't believe that's true. I think that we can teach the content and the practice in ways that don't need us to either violate permission, violate consent, or also tell someone else's story to make a point. So I want to invite you to really consider that piece. The third piece is that we can offer moments of quiet and breath and regulation throughout a virtual learning space. It takes a lot of energy to be looking at a screen, to be looking at yourself, to be monitoring the deck, the visual cues, what's going on in your house. That's a lot of management. And so even if your webinar or session isn't about mindfulness meditation, you can always start with like a quiet moment because many of us are going, I know Joanne and I are going, from webinar to webinar to webinar to webinar. So actually just having, and we're going to do this at the end, actually having a quiet moment in the middle and the end is okay. Just like we could be quiet in person, we can be quiet online. It does help to say though, we're about to take a moment of quiet so that not everyone in the chat box freaks out that they can't hear your audio. Just wanted to say that as a caveat. The fourth is that it kind of goes with the explicit study, which is to really not use images or video that graphically or illustrate harm or violence. So I want to just name that we don't always get this one right. But it is not necessary, if you're leading content, to show images that relate to that content if you're talking about harm. Trees work, ocean works, other graphics work, connection works that we take in just as much with our ears, if not with our eyes and not, and even more. And so you really don't need to use images of folks in distress if you're talking about distress. We feel that enough. The last, the second to last piece is this invitation to offer concrete ways for participants to access healing modalities, especially if it's activating. So just like we would do in an in-person session, if at the end, you want to offer them learning experiences, you want to offer them availability to engage in other ways to regulate, because so often we are talking about harm and then re-harming when we're sending folks out back into the world after 45-minute or 50-minute session without any tools or resources to stabilize and then re-center, right? So we actually want to offer concrete ways and that can either mean providing that breath and that quiet space at the end of a session or that can literally mean like, hey, we've been talking about suicide prevention this whole time and we know that many of us get into this work because we have personal connection with death by suicide. And so we want to offer you a couple of resources that you can access your own mental health, right? Okay. The last piece is, it's pretty specific, which is that we're seeing a lot of folks excited about Zoom or Google Hangouts, et cetera, and taking pictures and then posting them without people's consent. This is a big no-no. If we're creating a safe space and a welcoming space, who was online was online and that's it. We don't need to post pictures of it, especially if they're students. That's super violating on many, many levels. So if you are excited about your webinar, awesome. Take a picture of the slide or create another image and then you can blast it out. We don't want to take that excitement away, but we absolutely want to make sure that the images of people, especially if they haven't consented, are not on social media. Okay, so I'm going to pause here and I'm going to, there's going to be two different questions. One is, the first question, and I'm going to, I'm going to give you the two questions and then we're going to get into the two questions. So I'm going to first ask you, which of these, like what is striking you right now? What resonates right now? And then the second question will be, what additions do you have? So let's first go to, what's striking you right now? Like out of what we offered, what is feeling like, ooh, extra spicy or real or resonated in our offerings? And so I'm going to ask you to put your thoughts in the chat box or if you would not like to share, write or, or text yourself, take some time to make a meaning of what we just talked about. So I'll wait for some answers in the chat box to get a cue that you're with me. So after these suggestions, what resonated? Yeah, moments of quiet, offering activation warnings. Yeah, I'm going to need to let my students know of no pictures. Yes. And I don't know, Melinda, if you meant this, but it's also really nice to let people know at the beginning, we will not be taking pictures of the session so that folks feel safe in that, right? Using subject-specific content can be harmful. Moments of quiet. Yeah, okay, so that seems like it's really resonating with folks, these kind of pause moments. Yes, being an educator is a position of power. Yeah, we hold a lot of energy power, absolutely. Taking more breaths. I just took one right now for myself. Yeah. Yes, reemphasize the need for being mindful of what we're doing irrespective of medium and platform. Thank you, Ruth. Lovely, lovely. Yes, Susan, oh, hi Sue. Taking moments of breath and quiet is necessary for reflection, absolutely. Oh, yeah, so even nursing students can be activated. Yes, I think the invitation that I want to name is that we're all human, which means we can all be activated, no matter how skilled, how many letters after your name. Believe me, I teach this stuff and you ask any of my colleagues how trauma-informed I am and they'll tell you in any minute, not so much, like Leora's got work to do. So it's a lot easier to, to talk about it than it is to actually embody it. Yes, yes, thank you. So I, so lion in Alaska. Oh no, I think lion, you told me last week if you're Leon or lion, but I can't remember and I apologize. But I want to take one point with talking about the healing modalities afterwards. And this came up in a conversation with Stacy and Maureen at the South Southwest ATTC, who's on with us today. Lion, thank you. Which is that, especially in your programming, you could actually diversify your programming so that some of your content is actually content and knowledge and skill. And maybe some of your content is, is holding space for all your practitioners to process all that they're going through, right? So in any given week, as Joanne knows, as our distance learning manager, we have webinars and meetings and facilitation and content. But right now, what we're also doing in our region is having Wellness Wednesdays, which is a time for folks to just be, so that you don't have to be in your hat. You can be who you are as a human, so that you can then return to the content feeling a little bit more efficacious. Okay. The last piece on this topic before we shift that I want to, that I want to get to is to see if there are any other suggestions that you have for trauma-informed virtual or in-person, like do, do this or do not do that, just to see what comes up for you. So do this or do not do that. Any other suggestions? Any other suggestions? Okay. I don't see any other suggestions, which doesn't mean that we have all the answers. It just means that it may not be coming to you right now and that's okay. I want to say that our colleague, oh, not sure you're asking, thank you Laura. Yes, what I'm asking is if you have any additions to the foundational practices that we offered. Taking the temperature in a room with a check-in. Yes, thank you, Mary Ann, that's a good modeling for Laura. Yep, so that could mean exactly how, maybe how I did at the beginning of asking everyone to name a feeling. I've been on great webinars where everyone is on video and folks are just asked to do thumbs up sideways down in terms of how they're feeling. And Dr. Code Sue is saying to not require everyone to share, absolutely. So again, you can share in the chat box, optional or offline. And then taking time during it to check in. Yes, thank you Laura. Yes, oh, I love that from Cassandra, who says to be available after the training. And that's because some of you are inputting right now and you might need to process later. I love that. Okay, thank you. Okay, and Kim was saying at the beginning, you mentioned a triangle of content, audience, and the third one. Us, facilitators. Content, content, audience and facilitator. Those are the three things to be mindful of because we matter too. Right? So just like Joanne, we talked about setting up a room that you feel regulated in. I have lots of water next to me, I have my notes, I have Joanne as my partner to support me. My regulation is really important in this, in this, as much as yours. Okay, so we're gonna move forward. I just wanted to mention that at the end of every section, we have reflection questions in the guide. And I really recommend for you just to take time either with yourself or your colleagues to really kind of comb through these questions to think about how you might increase your trauma-informed and culturally competent virtual learning. The piece that I want to really invite you to think about is that we say, and this is actually not mine, this is Kunwarpal Delewals, who says it's not trauma-informed if it's not racially just. Which means we're using the word trauma-informed right now. But to be really clear, that equity and racial justice are at the center of why we talk about trauma-informed practices. Okay, so without further ado, we're gonna quickly move into facilitation guidance. Okay, so my friends, if you feel, if you feel comfortable, I invite you in the chat box to name one thing that we have done thus far that helped you feel welcomed, safe and invited into this learning environment. Get as creative as possible from the beginning until this moment. Uh huh, using our names, Laura, yes. Not requiring to use video, giving you options. Yes, giving the choice to share in the chat box. Yep, allowing you not to chat. Uh huh, oh upbeat greetings. So we, you know, it's like, I've been on so many meetings where people sign on and they're like this. Like my energy is going to create your energy, absolutely. Starting with the Zoom tech advice, that is primary, absolutely. So that we can get the tech out of the way so that we can get the in-person learning in the play. Absolutely. So yeah, so positive acceptance. The indicator to rename, I really believe in renaming. It also, sometimes I'll ask people to put the phonetic pronunciation so I'm not misnaming you or misgendering you if you want to put your pronouns. So all of these, all of these pieces help. I just want to name that it's kind of up to you and your style, but just like you would invite people into your house for a dinner party, so too do you invite them even into virtual learning. And as a facilitator, I want to say for virtual learning, it's even more important because people get nervous with virtual facilitation, virtual learning. You get nervous in technology. It makes everyone feel totally like having experiences of incompetency, myself included. So the more warmth that you can convey, the more that folks will feel you. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so in the facilitation guidance, you will note that there is a checklist of how to prepare and plan. Please check that out, make it your own, add it to your own. At this point, we do so many of these that I don't tend to need to look at it, but there are certain things that I remember and that Joanne reminds me. So it's helpful to have a colleague there. We're gonna talk about the power of norms for a second. Okay, so just like in-person, so too for norms in virtual. Which means that in a workshop, in a facilitation, in a coaching session, whatever modality, to be clear about your norms and the purpose from the outset. Which by the way, is something that I did not do, except that I did it implicitly. Like here are the norms for our technology, et cetera. If you were with us in a workshop, I would offer like three to five norms to help us all feel committed to the work. There are some groups that will say, if you're virtual, I'm going to, for example, I'm gonna commit to not having anything else popping up on my screen. Me personally, I don't think that that's entirely realistic because there are a lot of things happening right now. So I don't like to always invite people into that space. But I do like to invite people into the norm of not using acronyms. Many of us use so many acronyms all the day that it actually distracts the learner from being able to understand what's up. So I really want to invite you, the power of being a strong and positive facilitator is starting with norms. And just like creating content guidance, so too should your team and organization be clear about what norms you are going to hold virtually. That's actually an area of growth that we have as a TA center. We have implicit norms, we haven't made them explicit, except if you've been involved in our discussion hours. And then those are explicit from the get-go. Because it helps people ground and then orient, what are we being invited to do? And what are we being invited to not have to do? I am hearing a little bit of audio, so if we can make sure that you're muted, that would be helpful. And then the last is to create the warm, the welcoming and warm learning environment. I cannot stress this enough. If you call it trauma-informed, great. If you call it like just being a welcoming facilitator, also great. But the nerves are high, as I mentioned, especially in virtual learning. And so the more that you can invite folks by using names, by engaging with who you saw, where they're coming from. For example, like I can say to Maureen, Maureen, that lighting is making your skin tone just look so glowy. There's, you know, virtual learning can make us feel disconnected, but we actually don't have to feel that way. We can really kind of give cues to how we can feel like we're in person. Okay, so I want to pause and, because I'm watching our time and I want to pause to see in the chat box, this question. This, this question, which is, what is one way that you are going to commit to creating warm and welcoming learning environments virtually moving forward? One practice. So it could be, I'm gonna practice saying folks' names. Oh, check at the beginning, the renaming function. Relax and focus prior to starting a session, absolutely. Oh yes, lighting, yes. Joanne gave really wonderful tips for lighting on Friday, so that matters. Managing expectations, I love that. Engaging people in breathing and relaxation. Explaining technology and assuming not everyone knows. Yes, that's what we talked about on Friday, is that to assume that really we're all beginners because guess what, we really are. Yes, having participants share random or how their day is, having pre-established norms. Excellent. Oh, I love this so much. Yes. Okay, great. Oh, what are your thoughts on music while they wait to start? So this has been a new thing in the, in the world. I love it, especially there are some people who use music to transition to breakout rooms. And I also personally really love kind of like being in the, kind of like cocktail hour of the, of the virtual learning session and like welcoming people who sign on early and having chit-chat. So music wouldn't really help me there because it kind of distracts, but it is totally up to you. You know, I think the model should be like least awkward as possible and then move from there. So music helps, lovely. And I would of course just choose music that is the least, the most appeasing to the most people so that you don't start with activation before. Yeah, so Laura's saying being prior to the start so people aren't wondering what's up. Yeah, so Joanne and I sometimes will sign on 20 minutes, 15 minutes, just so that you know that someone is there and holding you. Yes. Okay, lovely. So we're gonna transition, one last piece before we close. And we just did this a little bit, like what are your facilitation growth points? What are your facilitation successes? I just want to name that there are some of my colleagues who are a little bit different energized than I am in person or virtual. And that doesn't take away from how, the high quality of their facilitation. You can be an introvert and an extrovert and be an amazing facilitator, both. Because some of you might be like, oh, I love her energy. And some of you might be like, ooh, that's a lot. So just like Maureen said, it's actually really helpful to differentiate your facilitation because energy matters. And we have a, some sort of writing on the screen, Joanne, that happened again. I don't know why that happened again. Okay, thank you. So the last piece to name before we close, and this goes into the triangle, right? So audience, facilitator. Oh yes, there's an arrow happening. Okay, is that the learner guidance is often not as remembered. And I just want to name how important that is. So in a preparation email or in a preparation communication, to be clear as much as possible about technology expectations and pedagogy expectations. If you're using Zoom, you can say, we really want you to be on video for learning reasons. Or you can say, you will not have to be on video for, for learning reasons. So as many things that you can do to prime someone so that when they show up, they're not like, what, I was supposed to be on video right now? But like actually prepared as much as possible. And also the pedagogy, you know, I think it really helps for folks to know this is going to be a discourse and discussion or this is going to be actually quite a sit and get. And that's what we're doing so that we can kind of monitor our own energy and expectations. There are many folks who are doing great work around gathering the pre-learner data. So I know that a lot of you on the line work with young folks and work with folks who work with young folks. I can't stress this enough from a digital, digital equity perspective, how important it is to understand where the folks are in what you're teaching them. So are they on their phones? Are they in, are they in a shelter? Are they at home in a safe place? All of those things should actually inform the norms that you provide. We're having a lot of college professors mandating for their students to be on video when being on video is not safe for them. And so we really want to make sure that the norms are not the facilitator-centered, but are the learner-centered. And then the last piece is to really always make sure that there is opportunities for continued learning. So some of you got exactly what you wanted, some of you wanted way more, way less. And so we want to really make sure that your learning moves forward. I do actually want to go back one point, which is to what Laura's offering in the chat box. Thank you Laura. I don't know Laura, but thank you Laura. Which is to really make sure that language is easy to understand. So that can happen in your pre-learner data gathering of like, where are folks at with this conversation? Introduction, kind of medium, advanced, so that my language reflects the language that will be most heard. The last piece that I wanted to offer is that we hear this a lot, to meet learners where they are. And I actually want to check that Paul Gorski offers us to shift it for equity and justice reasons and to create learning environments that allow folks to rise to where their students or clients or patients or partners need them to be. So instead of kind of changing so that anyone can enter, that's important. And also it's important to really hold high expectation for where the learning can go so that those who are most impacted will get the chance to experience the kind of learning environment they need. Okay, so all that to say, I actually, I, sorry, let's go back there before we transition out. Nope, actually I'm looking at our time. So I am gonna move forward, but we'll stay on afterwards. So I have to follow our own norms, which is to follow and coming up with upcoming learning opportunities. So here's a couple. I want to flag that the one that's highlighted at the top is not ours, but is my colleague, Kala Kuri and Dr. Peterson. They're doing a webinar tomorrow on best practices for facilitating virtual healing circles. And I really recommend you check them out if you are, if you're facilitating restorative justice circles or any other practices, they're phenomenal. You can always access our April newsletter, both Core and School Mental Health, so that you can get all of the stuff. You heard me talk about those Wellness Wednesdays earlier. We have one tomorrow and one next week. And then we do have a webinar for school mental health on planning for school crises during crisis. And that's a way for us to kind of get more integral. And some of your questions were a lot more specific about school mental health practices. We have a lot going on, our colleagues have a lot going on. You, please, if you have any resource navigation needs, let us know. The main point that I wanted to offer is that if you are interested in getting more feedback around your facilitation, please let us know. That's part of what we want to do is create a really healthy and held workforce that's not just about the what, but also the how and the why and the with whom. So I'm gonna close here. Before we close, I'm gonna ask you to put one thing. If there's just one takeaway that you got from this whole 45 that you want to go to the next room and tell your dog about or text your colleague about or remember next time. What is the one thing that you want to remember? And I do want to lift out that Joanne is reminding that this will be also sent out afterwards as well. Okay. Inform your norms, do no harm, yes, please. Planning is everything. Yep, the importance of checking in and also checking out, which is what we're doing right now. Yep, thank you. Virtual parameters, oh, I love that language. I might borrow that language. Conveying warmth, yep. Expectations for learners and communication, we must consider our learners, we must, we must. Okay, yes, match content affect and tone with the needs of audience. Yes, remind my collegiate professors, it may not be safe for students to be on video. Thank you so much, spread the word, absolutely. Yes, checking in and checking out, thank you. We are, yeah, where do you need me to be versus meeting people where they're at? Thank you Ruth, yes. Okay, well, Joanne and I, we want to be really respectful of your time. We're gonna stay on for a couple of minutes afterwards. If you want to put in the chat box or if you want to meet yourself. And then I really want to stress, we're gonna be sending, stress as in not stress you out, but stress is in bold, italicized, highlight. That we're gonna be sending out a survey afterwards and we really do need you to fill out that survey so that we can continue our work. My colleagues at the ATTC are nodding their head graciously because they know what that's like. But please do take the time to fill out the survey and that also helps us reflect our programming to meet your needs. Okay, wonderful, thank you Dr. Codes. Dr. Codes, y'all, we are in the audience of some massive, amazing folks who are contributing to the field in really important ways. Okay, excellent, cool. Again, feel free to shift to your next thing. I hope that you take a breath, I hope you take a big gulp of water. I know and I have full confidence that all of you, because you are here, it means that you care about creating warm and welcoming spaces virtually. And even by wanting to do that, you're already doing it. So thank you so much. Okay, Joanne, we're just gonna hang out if anyone wants to hang out with us. Bye, bye Ruth, good to see you.
That was great, Leora.
Hi, Maureen. I hope you had a good weekend.
I did.
Good, good. More to come.
Yes, yes. This is energizing and a lot of work we do right now isn't very energizing, so I very much appreciate it.
Hey, I feel like it's my job right now to like, you know?
Well, you don't even have to be particularly energetic yourself, I don't think, to necessarily make it energizing. I just think the welcoming part of it makes it, so.
Amen, amen.
You don't have to always be the one.
No, and I can't, as Joanne knows, as my colleague, there's been other calls where I'm like, I'm a zumbi, I'm a zombie-zumbi.
A zumbi is a good word. I had a couple of facilitators who were actually doing facilitation right now. So they couldn't be on it. Are you gonna be able to make the recording available or? That would be great.
Yes, right Joanne, recording? Yeah.
Yeah, they really wanted to be able to come, but they were actually hosting a facilitation thing right now, so.
I also encourage you to host your own study sessions with the guide.
I am going to do that, yes.
Stacy.
Thank you. I was, it's just amazing to me how much, you don't have to have a super long, dense presentation to get so much out of it, so thank you. This is like this really succinct and very impactful, yeah.
Cool, thank you. Yeah, I forgot to mention, and Joanne knows this, but there's like two methods of thought for webinars. There's a, there's like two arguments. One is One is to keep the visuals as least text-heavy as possible so that you're engaging with the audio, but then the other argument is that when people download the deck, they miss the learning, and I'm caught in between both of those, but for this session particularly, because you already have the guide, my, my wanting was to actually be more conversational than reading through, reading down a slide, so.
Yes. Yeah, I agree, because you do have the guide, and the guide does a great job of providing very relevant content very succinctly, and, and that's hard to do as well, even in writing.
So, yeah, well, that's, I mean, it was actually built on the shoulders of Joanne and other colleagues who've put together a lot of this work previously, and we just kind of gathered it in one thing, so, yeah.
Well, and in the, in the realm of invitation being the sincerest form of flattery, if you don't mind, I may use some of your content from this, when working with, we have a lot of facilitators in, that work for us, and I just think it's so valuable.
Do it. What do you mean? That's what.
Okay, I, well, I'm fully crediting. I just want to make sure I'm not, you know?
I just want to connect, so Joanne is our distance learning manager, and Maureen and Stacy, oh gosh, okay, Maureen, no, Stacy is the South Southwest.
Yeah.
ATTC Southwest, is that right?
Yes, South Southwest, yeah. Oops, sorry.
Stacy's the mental health.
Hello.
Hey, and I work on the addiction technology transfer center, but we're both at the University of Texas, and we are, we partner in a lot together. Actually, at our prevention TTC, they're at the University of Oklahoma, and we partner with them a lot too, and we have a really cool team, I feel like.
You do. And, okay, let me make sure, it's Louisiana, Texas, Oklahoma.
New Mexico.
Go.
Arkansas.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've got a big region, but Joanne, if you have seen a lot of folks from their region attending our events, which they have, it's because our colleagues are being like super collegial and continue to promote our events, so.
I have sent this learning guide to many people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adieu us.